For the trustee to order. And please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Malonius excused, Zagami.
Here.
Cronin. Ermeling. Hardinger. Pensenot.
Present.
Wyland.
And I know a trustee Cronin wasn't excused. He did indicate he might appear by phone if he has an ability.
Well, they can join us when you come. So public comment, we don't have anybody from public here tonight. Item four. Approve March eighteen twenty twenty four Board of Trustees meeting.
Move to approve minutes as presented.
In a second.
Oh, second.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls. I have it. Thank you. Acknowledge report minute from board committee commission.
Motion to acknowledge nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have it. Item five. At seventeen. So six, seven, eight. Fifteen and sixteen. Both there's nothing there.
There is no report to acknowledge.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Item seventeen administrator.
I had a report in the packet only if there was questions.
Is there a question? No question. Item eighteen pork.
My report was also in the packet. Just thanking again everybody for all the help they did on the election, the Parks Department, planning and development, both trustee Zagami and trustee Pensenot did a wonderful job helping out. This was the Streets Department, just a lot of effort within the building here and we had a very, very good election. It wasn't as good of a turnout as I thought, but and we, the flow went really well.
It was a bit cold. Other than that, it was good. So.
What did you say? Twenty-five percent of voters?
About twenty-nine. We had sixteen fifty at the polls.
I think it was well organized. It was very nice and I didn't hear anybody complain or give a right, but that's all right. But so other than that, I think myself or my neighbor showed up here. They didn't say anything. They thought it was well done. Thank you. Nineteen finance.
I guess I just want to mention that our audit is next week. And if anyone, our auditors, they are Hawkins Ash this year. Sometimes the auditors will reach out to board members directly. So it's fun to give you a heads up. And I got nothing more to add.
Who's going to do the audit?
Hawkins Ash is the name of the CP for.
They've done it before.
They did it three years ago.
Questions? Item Tony fire EMS.
As my monthly report as well as our annual report are in the packet. If anybody has any questions on that, I know there's a lot of information in there.
Yeah, too large for fire. Is that what you said in your report?
To what? I'm sorry.
To fire.
Two fires? Yes, yes. We actually just had a grass fire right before this meeting as well.
Question for chief. Item twenty-one park and recreation.
I do have a report in the packet. The only updates I have are today are polls were due for marketing agencies for the Kennedy Park campaign. We also are already pretty much set to go with the RP for the concrete borders for the playgrounds. Baseball, softballs currently taking place with baseball Kennedy tonight, softball Thursday after the field conversion at Diamond One at Kennedy. And we're going forward on getting the pool ready at this point, taking advantage of the weather to get the plumbing put together and started up just in case we run into any problems. And we of course have some repairs.
How long does it usually take to get a pool going?
It all depends on how much staff we can put towards it, but with everything else going on, it's at least a month typically.
And then do we know anymore about phasing in the bathrooms to phase one instead of phase four?
That was added to phase one as far as the RP. And I reviewed the RP for the construction documents, architectural drawings that Michael put together. And I reviewed it and I could send it out to you guys once we feel like we have it ready to go some extent, but it has been moved to phase one. Based on Michael, it's phase one.
That's my understanding. That was the feedback.
Yep, yep. That was the feedback we got. Just based on you're going to fundraise, you're going to fundraise for the field, not the bathrooms and put the village's contribution towards the bathroom shelter facility on the east side of the park.
They didn't think they could do a lot of fundraising for bathrooms.
Right.
They just order a grasshopper. I might be thirsty.
Not in order for anybody else, Nate, just yourself. Let the record reflect.
All right. Other question? None.
Are we talking about the? Do you know anymore about as far as dates for the new playgrounds to?
So May sixth installation for Kennedy Park begins. They're hoping to wrap that up by the end of the following week. Because we do have a group that actually is reserved at that Sunday. So we're open to wrap the initial installation up and have the playground up and going at that point. And then they'll start the two at Yellow Banks. Open to get two or three cranked out. It's usually a week to week and a half per playground depending on obviously weather, et cetera. But so they're trying to get at least Kennedy and both the Yellow Banks done initially and then they'll leave and then return. So they'll be here anywhere from two to three weeks initially to get those first ones done or more.
So then who would put the wood chips in and who put the border at? So.
So the wood chips, the are provided with the playgrounds. That was part of the contract.
And they are installing them because.
They are not. They are not installing them. Those installing them. It was part of the project. And the concrete border proposal, like I said, is ready, ready to go with the deadline of June third on it right now, not June third. May third for them to get the back.
But they're going to have.
And the border goes in following the install.
Sure, but you're going to put in a teeter totter. And then it's going to take staff time to don't mulch and then it's going to take staff time to. I highlighted maybe, maybe stuff moves really fast around here. Sometimes surprises me, sometimes doesn't, which also surprised me, but that's okay. I find it just strange that you're going to be a concrete guy here. In a week, two weeks or six weeks.
Well, the proposal that we put that I have put together is four weeks following the final installation. So we can do the installation of the wood fiber, except of the far edges prior to the concrete installation.
Then you have staff come back and fill that.
And then fill that little bit, that little bit gap in. Just because we know that because of the staggered installations, we can't get them here all at one time.
Okay.
So that was the plan. I mean, and I'm also, you know, playing with the parks, red bull situation. So we have rented these parks out. We're trying to coordinate it. So if parks are rented out and they have no playground.
You rent out Kennedy Mockmiller, correct?
Hey, Mockmiller, Kelly O'Land, two at Yellow Banks and Robinwood. So all of them except for Williams are rented out that are getting. So I actually responded to an email today and stated that maybe we should have not taken reservations this year just due to the playground installation. But currently the Yellow Banks Kennedy are coordinated around. Have you stopped any other rentals? Oh, we have not. Just to coordinate the construction. We have not because we don't have set dates on the remaining four.
Love to talk further about this when we get to fifty-three.
Other question? All right. Twenty-two plan and development.
All right, I am on Zoom. I only have an update. I forgot to put in that the Plan Commission did take action on the conditional use permit for you, Sam. At the last meeting, I had asked to take that for legal action. Following that, we were able to work with the applicant. He came in and they issued the conditional use, so we should be good there. So that was the only update I have from my report.
Just a question. You're losing one step. Are you planning to replace them?
I actually had out the job application description the next day or the day that I received Aaron's resignation. Actually, we have an interview with someone local when I get back on Wednesday. And then I do have a number of other ones to kind of sift through. I'm actually at a planning conference right now, so I don't know if that's somewhat. I'm seeing a lot of things come through. Indeed, now there's a lot of students here. It's kind of set up as an entry level position. Jamie and I have been talking about that and the needs for the department in the future, but so it looks like I've got some, right now a pool of people from granted, that pool is not from the state, except for the one that I am interviewing on Wednesday. So. But yeah, we're trying to get somebody in as soon as we can.
Great. Can you question? Yes.
Just a point of information relating to the public as you were to the playing development last month, I love it. Director sent out an email for the ED report as for economic development report.
Okay.
Very well. That is all.
Great.
Just to clarify that.
Thank you. Any question for chat? Are you going to stay around or you're done?
I'll stick around. I'm sitting in my hotel room, so.
Well, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'll be around to answer questions. I've got a few things on the agenda and I will try from here.
All right. Thank you. Item twenty-three, please.
So this is the last meeting with us attending is Everest Metro. Next month we'll be here as Mountain Bay Metro. With that being said, we've been working together closely with Rothschild and we've actually started the moving process. Our detective bureau has currently moved over to the Rothschild building at two eleven Grand Ave and our clerical just moved over today as well. Our front lobby, we have the doors locked now and a sign on the door. We're going to be putting notes on social media for people to go over to two eleven Grand Ave. And I worked with Nate, so our phone system is forwarded over to the new location as well. With that being said, our stats and reports should be in report share for the month. You may see with Mountain Bay Metro, a change of the format for the report share to look closer to what Rothschild has. Does anybody have any questions?
Is the non-emergency line will work both for Rothschild and for E M P D?
Yes.
Do you have any intent at some point to just combine that to one emergency? Okay. And will that be Rothschild's number or our number?
That I don't know yet.
Okay. But for right now until further notice, both non-emergency numbers will get you there.
Yep. The only thing is like for clerical, the extensions will go through. But so if you dial forty-two oh two, it'll go through Rothschild. And if you dial forty-two oh five, it goes.
I think we're going to miss you. Our director Masker at least couple of times a day.
We'll still be driving by.
Well. I think people are going to miss us that they like it there. It was good, good location. So and I thank you.
Have they decided what to do with Jason's memorial?
Chief Hunt is going to be working with Kara directly. And the plan is, I believe, to move it once. And so to find your permanent location is going to be, and that will be.
They haven't decided yet.
And still you're going to come to a meeting or somebody else?
Yep, it'll probably be Chief Hunter. I.
Question. Thank you. Twenty-four public work Michael.
We had a new employee start today in our street staff, so Peter Barazin is, I guess we're back up to full staff there with the operating crew, so. Hopefully it's a good fit and nobody leaves for a while, so we'll see how that goes. And then we did put an offer out for a staff engineer and on Friday the individual did accept the position. So sometime in May here, he'll be starting, trying to just work that out with his current employer as far as getting some of the projects finished up that he's working on and several of them are for the Village of Weston. So either way, he'll be working for the village.
So he did accept it?
He did, yes.
What was the offer? How much he offered?
I don't know if I can say that right now.
If he can tell us.
Yeah, if you like, we could, we could share that, but I don't know that we want to say it shared.
Okay. I can live with all of it. That's all. I can guess.
It was within the range that was set with the, when we brought the bring the position to the board. It was within that salary range.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Question for Michael? Yes.
Well, seven and eight are not running yet or?
Um, they are. They're not in auto yet, so we do, we can run them in hand mode. So we've been turning them on during the day and let the water flow using the wells. They're not saying stagnant, but still working on a few some minor electrical and what's the right word? Instrumentation to make sure that everything's talking appropriately, so.
So was it deemed substantially complete or not? I mean, it doesn't.
Right, so. So at night it's not, I guess, but during the day it's working. So we are working through that with Ellis and the D N R.
When was the original substantial completion? I know they pushed back because we had some permitting issues. August, I think I pushed it.
Yeah, it was, December was the most recent one. And then we did get the wells fired up here in February there's then so. Some items that the D N R noted that need to be taken care of, so.
There's no monetary penalty for to the contractor for doing longer.
That's one thing we're still working on with them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I guess the positive with that is we are planning to get a full system water main flushing, go in here and first part of May and then also the EPA new PFOS levels came out last week. So we should be good with where we're at. Wells one and five kind of teeter right on the border. So we got to get some clarification from them. It sounds like we'll have about five years before those become enforceable limits where we would be told you either need to turn off the water or 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 treat it. Wells one and five were are in our water master plan for iron manganese removal. So we'd add a PFOS treatment to that if necessary, moving forward here. So but with seven and eight that we can run, we would be able to turn one and five off, so.
So what's the lover?
It's four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS separately. And then there's a hazard index with several other PF and other letters, HXS and FNA. I'd have to really look at the chemistry to tell you what those do, but so well, three and five. One of them is at like three point nine and then the next test it'll be like four point one and same thing, you know, one and five have that where they're one time you'll test them, they'll be just under the next time you test them. They're just, just the right around that four parts per trillion.
So four, four is the enforcement action?
That'll be the M C L. Yeah.
Okay. What's your Michael?
That's the maximum contaminant level. I'm sorry.
It doesn't take much to get to four for four trillion.
It does not, no. Pretty minor or minimal. I shouldn't say not minor.
All right. Item twenty-five technology.
I had a report in the packet. If you have any questions.
So the fiber optic is done.
Through the SCADA system?
Anyone is done.
For this, for the SCADA project? Yeah, we're just working with them on getting some finishing cables that forward with the adapters. But yeah. That's all. It's all completely.
How did they do?
How, where do they run it?
How did they do their work? Did they have anything, any gas line?
Nothing I'm aware of. There was some miscommunication as far as in the project of what, where they ran the fiber, but we were all able to figure it out.
There was one sanitary lateral that did get hit on Ross Avenue.
It did hit it?
Yeah.
Sanitary is better than the gas line. The other guy had the gas line at the beginning of a masker, then at the end of the masker, then at the corner of masker and DJ. Three, three times one day. So.
I'm probably why they hit the sanitary lateral. Then they wanted to make sure they were deep enough.
Okay, thank you. Work product transmitter, item twenty-six.
Move to acknowledge seventeen through twenty-five.
Second, second.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, right?
As you were to acknowledge agenda item seventeen twenty-five.
What about you yet?
Yep. There's a second?
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls, I have it. Thank you. Senate agenda, item theory.
Got to go back to twenty-six, twenty-six through twenty.
I thought he just made a motion.
Motion to acknowledge twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls, I have it. Thank you. Consent agenda item theory. Request to pull item out of consent consideration.
Mr. Vice Chair, we got a twenty-nine yet?
He only did twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Okay. Sorry. Discussion and our action on draft December twenty twenty-three budget status report.
Move to acknowledge draft December two thousand twenty-three budget status report for all funds.
Second. Discussion?
Yes. Is this just a formality to say this is where it was and it's going on it next week type of thing? Jessica, okay.
This is where final numbers are as of before the audit. So just want to give a heads up and see where we are. Usually we're pretty fortunate. We don't have much for changes after the audit. I mean, the past couple of years, we really haven't had any large changes.
Thank you.
It's all been the same.
Anything else? Anybody else? Yeah, motion and second rate.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls, I have it. Thank you. Item thirty-one. Approve voucher check number sixty-one fifty-five three dash sixty-one six eighty-eight. And sixty-one seven ten dash sixty-one seven fifty-six. Sixty-one seven sixty-one dash sixty-one eight eleven. And nine zero one forty-eight dash ninety one fifty-one.
Motion to approve thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah.
Move it.
On the license and likely many of these licenses require background checks.
Yeah, some of them do.
Just a point of order that we probably have to change at the Mountain Bay Metro P D. And I don't know in this transitional phase if we need to have both of them on there. So if Joe Smith applies for liquor license today, that he doesn't get the background check with E M P D, but E M P doesn't exist by the time it comes back. Makes sense? So just if you can add to your thing that you would do, that it might not be Everest Metro Police Department that does the background check, it might be.
Yep, Mountain Bay. Yep. Sure, we can do that.
Prevent it, stub tolls in the future.
Understandable.
Thank you.
And I'm sure they would coordinate that it wouldn't be.
Right, but technically on the form it says we're waiting on the E M P D and then E M P D one day came back as Mountain Bay.
Anything else? All in favor signify by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls, I have it. That was item forty, so action on that. Orders forty-one, orders twenty-four dash zero zero four and orders amending chapter second. Administrative section two point two fourteen entitled standing committee R E. Finance and the Human Resources Committee and Community Life and Public Safety Committee. Let's be gracious. Item forty-one.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-four double oh four. An ordinance amending chapter two administration section two dot one. Two dot two one four standing committees of the municipal code for the Village of Weston, including finance and resources committee and the community life and public safety committee.
Discussion, all right?
Yes. Number twelve on that. Oh, it's. Yes, number twelve in community life and public safety, but it'd be twelve in that one and doesn't mention ex officio for finance, I don't believe. But the question I had a discussion I wanted to have was are the ex officio members voting members? I feel as though they should be non-voting members because if you look at the numbers, there'd be five ex officio members listed, which is more than is required for a forum for that body.
No, the ex officio members would not be voting members. They, when that committee existed previously, they weren't voting members or just to provide that liaison and to have that staff expertise in the room. We could add not voting to that item if that, if, if you want it, but they would, they would be non-voting members.
So I will amend that motion to include the language under section two dot two one four standing committees paragraph one. At the end of the paragraph, or the shells are on each committee as a non-voting ex officio members.
I think ex officio, any committee you look at, you're not voting member. Unless we're taking exception.
It's not specifically called that.
It's not just here. There's any, any place you go, any other committee, any organization, ex officio, they are non-voting. But they are the member for a lifetime.
Ex officio. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. No, I was just, it's really preference. Ex officio usually means that they're, that they are non-voting, but if you would prefer to have it say non-voting, so it's specific that if the motion got a second, that's an easy add to that.
So okay, is that what your motion is?
That is the amendment to the original motion.
Is there a second?
And was there a second on that amendment?
No, there was. Okay.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, we, I have sat on these committees and those members have voted and the votes have counted, that's why I'm asking this.
You shouldn't.
I understand that.
They shouldn't, it's just shit about.
But to clarify it, so there is no confusion, that's why I asked for that. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna vote on the amendment first. And you second the amendment, correct? All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The post, I have it. Now, accept, we, you already made a motion also for a.
Original motion is as presented to approve the ordinance.
All in favor signify by saying aye? You got everybody aye? Okay, I have it, thank you. Resolution, number forty two, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero zero eight authorizing resolution. Did somebody explain that, what does that mean?
I can. So, uh, to be able to submit, uh, grants through, you know. Which, um, on your state and federal grants, you have, the village has to authorize a staff member to be able to submit the grant. And then signing the necessary paper. So by approving the resolution, you are authorized to let a staff member do that. Otherwise, we cannot do that without your authorization.
Do we have to do this all the time?
Yes, yeah, we did three last month for grant applications for, uh, public works also. Uh, it's something that is done with all state and federal grants that we submit.
All right. Question on that?
So who are we, who are we approving, it's just.
So it's Jessica Kowalski. So following the approval by the board to move forward with grant application at the last meeting. Uh, Jessica was eager to take on that responsibility, um, so she's actually working on the grant application and she's done. Um, some of the reimbursement claims and work with other grants, so we've had before, so.
It's really a requirement by the DNR just to make sure staff isn't going rogue and submitting grants that, you know, he doesn't want them to be submitting grants for.
So this specifically for is the part of the next committee?
It's for a staff member to do it, um, and it's for the Yellow Banks application.
We'll do that.
We'll do that one.
Getting to that.
There was another grant we'd have to do another one.
I'll move to approve the resolution, uh, two thousand twenty four dash zero eight.
Again.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, I have it, thank you. Item forty three, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero zero nine, a resolution to. To approve the final plan of Arrowhead State First Edition.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero zero nine.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, I have it, thank you. Item forty four, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one zero. Relocation order and determination of necessity for Western Avenue Road Project. One canal street to Ryan Street.
Move to approve resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero to initiate the real estate acquisition process for. amended areas along the Western Avenue, Von Kennel to Ryan Street roadway and the cross. Cross country utility project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Michael, is that follow the federal or state?
Like process?
Yeah.
I guess. Yeah, I guess the states have an domain process.
Okay.
So the, the, this amendment was really just due to some design changes requested by property owners after we approved it initial time, so. Um, easements got shifted a few feet, but, uh. You have to have the official adoption of that to put back on the transportation plat. To represent those changes.
All right. Other question? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The post, I have it, thank you. Item forty five, resolution twenty twenty four zero one one, notice of public road. Dash East Jellmac Avenue, Kirk Street to Moncanal Street. You want to explain this, Michael?
Yeah, so as we start the design for East Jellmac Avenue between Kirk and Von Kennel. Especially the surveyors found that the right of way that was initially dedicated. Back in the, I guess the late sixties, the roadway wasn't built within that original right of way. Uh, but because we have, do have a road built and we've been maintaining that roadway for over ten years with public funds. Uh, we need to declare that that is the public roadway now and utilize the existing road as our sixty six foot right of way. More or less everything, uh, the Tower Ridge subdivision on the south side there, the WPS power plant or substation. Uh, CSMs, uh, after the fact have all kind of used the roadway as the middle of the right of way, even though the original dedication of the right of way. Uh, is further south, so the road was actually built north of where the right of way dedication was. So we are, uh, I, we asked the attorney Eady about this and he said we needed to just declare that this is our. Our, this is where the right of way is now, and, uh, so then we have the, this and the plat, uh, I guess attached to it. Just showing that this is what we are now calling the sixty six foot right of way for East Jellmac Avenue.
So it wasn't just center line off, it was off of a right of way?
Part of it was off the right of way completely, yes.
Other question for Michael?
There's no acquisition with this, correct?
No, it's, um.
It's a formality.
It's a formality just to show that, yes, this is now what the right of way of East Jellmac Avenue is. Um, you can see the part down there, it says to be vacated, so I mean, the actual right of way. Was south there, where if you, if you looked at an aerial, that person's house is actually, uh, in that, uh, area, so.
So was, was the road moved because there was a house there?
No, I, I'm pretty sure the road got built there first, that, uh, it, it was a kind of an odd thing, the section line. The road wasn't built on the section line, the road was built completely on the south side of the section line.
Do you have any idea what? Is it survey thing or?
Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking somebody misinterpreted something that said, you know, cornered for center line and they. Went with it and everything else got built up around it.
Those were surveyors.
Yeah.
Other question?
That, that is our, well, that is current right away, that's being vacated, that packs the proper. So there's no additional right of way acquisition, but we are vacating some right of way to correct it to where it is.
We're really just cleaning it up.
Just ordering it very well, thank you.
Accept motion on that.
Second.
Yeah, I will.
The second? Okay, discussion, all in favor signify by, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, I have it, thank you. Unfinished business, item forty six, update and possible action on American. Park of fun.
There's no update there, we just keep it as a standing agenda item.
Where we at with what's remainder is in there, because we talked last month about kind of cleaning that up as far as what money have been.
It's all committed at this point in time.
The word is done.
It's not done because it, we actually, we need the. The contracts, so that would actually commit that and we're working on that with parks with that final dollar amount, but it will, there isn't any more to allocate.
Right.
Yep.
I think once the, the RFPs and everything's done and everything's allocated out, it'd be nice to take a look at exactly what money went where. Um, because I know it was, it was a, there's a priority to us when that money came in to put back as much into. What the community could have as possible, and I think with the parks, everything else, just, it'd be a very transparent thing to have.
Anybody else? So we don't need a motion?
No, no, no action.
Item forty seven, update and pause for twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty five. Just to. It's a tragic plan.
No action needed unless either just again a placeholder, but we've been keeping it within the individual reports.
Item forty eight, discussion of action. On placement of stop sign within the Everest edition.
That's a lot of stop signs. We have an alt open for most, most of you guys, fire.
Yeah, so, so we're the.
On, on Lawndale, right, we're leaving alt open so that if you guys need to get back there, you're not stopping every block. That was a discussion that we had last time, right?
Yes, we looked at the four-way uncontrolled intersections primarily along Lawndale, um.
Right.
And, uh, talking with, uh, Captain Aldrich, who, uh, ran this past, some of his patrol staff. Uh, they recommended, uh, I guess, just putting staff control on, say, El Segundo, Monterey Laguna, Everest. And down, so Lawndale, you would still be able to go north, south on Alta Verdi, Normandy, same thing, but at least it would give some, um. I guess, uh, clarity as far as who, what, uh, vehicle should be doing at those intersections.
We, we have had some accidents, like there's one at Monterey, uh, in Lawndale and. With stop signs going east and west, there's still a thoroughfare with Lawndale or Alta Verdi, so if. Somebody's going to work, they only have to stop basically one time versus stopping every time, but if you're going east or west, where we've. Put traffic coming, going from the schools and we have had accidents, it slows traffic down.
So how many stop sign we putting up?
That'd be sixteen stop signs, in intersections.
About twenty four thousand.
I don't know if it's that, uh. I mean, a lot of those, we have a post already at one of those sides, so.
Well, you said the cost is between thousand fifteen hundred thousand.
Yeah, that was total.
For how many sides, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it'd be like fifteen hundred, maybe two, you know. Yeah.
I thought that was each.
No.
All right.
I move to direct staff to install stop signs within the Everest edition at the seven identified. Uncontrolled intersections along the east-west streets.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye? Post, I have it, thank you, new business, item forty nine. Discussion and or action approval development agreement for subdivision improvement in the platform Arrowhead State First Edition. Michael?
I guess the development agreement, it's attached, uh, we did have attorney Eady read through it, it's a pretty. Uh, slimmed down version, they don't have water and sewer going in. Or really not much for stormwater, uh, ditches and a couple culverts, so. Uh, fairly straightforward as far as, uh, infrastructure, uh, development.
Move to approve the development agreement for subdivision improvements in the plant of Arrowhead State's first edition as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I have it, thank you, skip item fifty. Right?
Yep, that will be for next month.
Okay, item fifty one, discussion and action approve of Arbor Day proclamation. P dash twenty four dash zero zero one on May twenty four, twenty twenty four.
Move to approve proclamation Papa twenty four double oh one, designated in May twenty four, twenty four, as Arbor Day in the village of us.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, but signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, I have it, thank you, item fifty two. Discussion and action on approval for wider appreciation day proclamation. P twenty four dash zero zero two on May ten, twenty twenty four.
Move to approve P dash twenty four dash zero zero two, provider appreciation day proclamation.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, I have it. Item fifty three, discussion and action on playground equipment removal and disposal.
So this is my item, um, and I did discuss it briefly at our committee. Just due to fact that approximately three weeks ago, we got a call from the, um, Sultan. Which were working with this Minnesota was that's playground, it stated that Kennedy Park playground completed. It was already manufactured and that the remainder of them should be done at the end of April. Well, that's completely news to us considering they told us that it was gonna be, you know, mid, late summer by the time. There would be anything taking place. Um, so. A little bit of shock, I was like, well, so what are we gonna do? So they set up a Zoom meeting with us. Um, a little less than two weeks after that, um, to go over it, um, and they stated that they still would like to. Complete the first installation starting May sixth. Um, of course, that changed our timeline, we didn't really have a timeline, I was, we were waiting for a timeline. Uh, but they said all the playground equipment will be manufactured and delivered to last week. So it'll all be on site here, um, so.
Um, where they, I'm sorry, where are they delivering it to?
Here.
They're gonna put it back behind the building here?
Yeah, all be delivered here and then we disseminated to each location, that was a portion of the contract where we want to save on the shipping.
Right.
Versus shipping them at different times, different locations, because there's multiple drop fees, et cetera, so we were having multiple deliver.
Makes sense, I was just.
Disseminated, so, um, we focused on. Initially, our discussion focused on the community parks, which Kennedy and the Yellow Banks, so, and we also looked at. Which parks were reserved during the month of May, um, versus, you know, putting someone out of place that had previously reserved. So Kenny has three reservations as an adult group, same group, three days within a six day time period. Um, Yellow Banks, both shelters are not reserved the entire month of May, uh, so we were focusing on those two, just because they are community parks. Um, they are two of the highly rented facilities. Um, and that we could get them complete before like graduation party season starts in June. Um, I mean, my response initially was today to administer here was that maybe we should have just. Taken the year off for reservations, just so we went ahead and worked around them. Um, it's not a huge amount of revenue, but it is revenue that we get for park reservation, so, um, at this point, we have to work around. We've taken reservations, we have reservations at our other facilities, the only one that doesn't get reserved is Williams, so we don't reserve it, so. Um, but the focus still focused on community parks first, so next one would be Kelly Land, and then we move on to Sand Hill. Robinwood and Williams.
So I've got, I've got two questions, the, the playground manufacturer. The RFP originally was, was, who was doing the installation, was us always or?
They are doing the installation.
They were supposed to.
They are doing installation, the only thing we're installing is the manufacturer wood fiber, which is the wood chips. And then the concrete border is separate also, that was not part of the, uh, project.
Yep, I got it, so you guys are taking playground equipment out, they're installing it.
So, no, that's what we're asking, can we take out the playground equipment?
Contracted to do that.
Well, originally, we're gonna put them on Wisconsin surplus.
Who was, who was contracted to take them out originally?
That'd be where you.
Nobody, nobody.
Okay, so they weren't part of that.
No, initially, we were planning on doing it on our own.
Okay.
But we got the suggestion that we should put them out on Wisconsin surplus.
Right.
And have them complete, and have somebody bid on it to complete removal and maybe recycle it, you know, make some money on it or reuse it, et cetera.
So in our, in our effort of taking them out before these guys put them in, how long does it take them to install? I guess my.
A week to a week and a half per structure. So based on our phone call, Zoom meeting with them, um, surplus auction site is two weeks old. And then how much time do you give somebody to remove it within a time period? So with the, with the timeline being.
The way it is.
So small for these two areas, we were hoping to do the. So small for these two areas, we were hoping to do the removal on our own, at least to do Yellow Banks, Kennedy.
How do you guys feel about being able to remove that and keep it as something that we might be able to sell? Are we just gonna scrap it?
It was initially, that was the plan, which we had urgently discussed was just scrap them. Just because of ease removal would be us just taking it with the backhoe, throwing it in the truck and taking it out and dropping it off.
Right.
And being done with it. But because of compressed timeline with, say, two weeks on the auction site.
Right.
As of tomorrow. And then how much time do we give them for removal prior to May sixth installation? So. I think it's April fifteenth.
Right.
There's not a big time period. We didn't want this to happen this way. But we also didn't want all playgrounds ripped out for the whole summer, knowing they weren't gonna install them until. You know, August.
So primarily the the push then is to get this done, not only because they're ahead of schedule, but because. My summer starts usually, these are rented out the entire summer, trying to make sure that we have them.
Shelter is rented, but yes.
Teeter totters not rent.
No, no, but you know, we don't wanna displace somebody.
Going on when people are supposed to have a party.
Yes.
So if we, how confident do you feel if you guys rip these out, if you have to rip them out, that it'd be in any sort of condition to be able to sell?
They wouldn't be.
Okay, so.
If we were to manually take them apart for reinstallation, it would probably take us a week to do each one.
Yeah.
Because they're all vandal proof connectors.
Right, you know, I understand. It, I'm just so.
Especially wrenches for everything.
Right. It's gonna take a lot more time to do that than just scrap them. How long have, have most of this playground equipment been there? Ten, twenty years? I mean.
Twenty plus. Every one of them that we're looking at has been in there since the mid nineties.
Okay.
With the exception of the second one at Kenny, which was installed in two thousand and two, which is still twenty-two years ago.
So, I'm sorry. So like the last question would be, is there anything that on these playgrounds that we could possibly use at another location? That would be worth our time taking them apart and then just dismissing the rest and scrapping them? Like some kind of a rating like, okay, this is actually like in good condition. Can we put it over here?
As far as the play structures, no.
Okay.
I mean, so we're going with game time play structures. These are all Burke. They're being removed. We do have the merry-go-rounds, the spring riders, stuff that are alternate accessories that could be saved to some extent if we wanted to reinstall somewhere.
Okay, so last question. I know you're on a compressed timeline. This is literally just three, two, two weeks away that you have to get this done. Do you have the staff to be able to do that in that time where you're trying to get the pool ready and everything else?
Well, we've talked to staff about doing it, but without the board. Saying we can do this, we didn't really move forward with anything. That was one of my comments. I'm like, it's all happening in May when the pool needs to get ready. We wouldn't rely on public work staff to help us. They are aware of the project. They've been aware of it since before that we still need to prep these sites regardless. So if somebody else comes to do, does the removal, we still have to prep the site. So it'll be twelve inch this deep, maximum eighteen inch deep, less than one percent grade. So we still have to prep the site regardless if we do the removal or not.
Okay, so that's mostly Michael or?
That would be public works, yes.
And Michael, how are you doing on staff?
Yeah, I guess.
They're ready to go on it as far as I know.
Just good to go. Yeah, rainy day. I mean, a guy, you know, we have two people in there doing that versus, you know, we can't be cracked ceiling that day because it's raining, so we can. Buy new equipment and take care of it.
Thank you both. I don't have a lot of questions. I just.
Yes.
So I would like to personally say and apologize for failing staff for for the motion that I made. I didn't put a timeline on it. I should have said I wanted it. Listed within seven days. That would have given time from the middle of February. So my thought process on this whole thing, and I should have shared that. So shame on me. If we listed this thing, we we decided as board, hey, let's list this thing to see if we're not paying someone else to take it out, or we're not ourselves paying to take it out. And we can recoup a couple dollars. If it's eight dollars, we recoup eight dollars, right? Did it in less than an hour's worth of work, so I'm sure you would take an eight dollar an hour rate. We'll talk about that finance later, but so.
Well, I have apologized too, because I was under the assumption that we would do this. So it could be ready for late summer.
Yep, and and totally good. So so if 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 it was done right away and it was on surplus. We knew that this stuff wasn't gonna be built yet and nobody's gonna peel a teeter totter out of the ground when it's frozen. But you can take photos, you can bid on a frozen teeter totter and. That two or three week period will elapse and now it's the end of March and hey, you won yourself a brand new swing set. So come down and pay the man a dollar and come dig your swing set out. And it's gone by April first. And now when the phone rings from place set. So if that were coordinated, but we had no timeline from those folks, so shame on them. For calling you and saying, oh, by the way, all your stuff's ready. We're gonna drop it off next week. Oh, that's on. You ready for us? So I think it's only fair to to. We're not the only swing set that they're putting in this year. So if all of our stuff is getting replaced, not just replacing a park. I think that could be coordinated in phases with them that it doesn't have to start May sixth. It could start June sixth, it can start July sixth. At the same time, the the teeter totter still functions. Soon as you can still hold their grad party there. A lot of graduates from high school these days don't run on a swing set, I don't think. But their brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, moms, dads, might. So I think since our old parks system is gonna be disrupted in twenty-four. Then I think we should waive all of the rental fees for twenty-four. Even if you rented the park for this weekend. I mean, the the cost of the revenue, what is it? Fifty dollars? Hundred dollars rent the park?
It varies. Eighty-five is the typical.
So I I mean, we're not losing out on tens of thousands of dollars here annually. And the dollars that. Then the renter knows and that that saves staff some burden too of the, oh crap, well, they gotta do three and I've got. Kelly Land rented out and now what am I supposed to do with this grab party or whichever? Now you feel bad and you wanna fund. You shouldn't have, you you've got enough stuff to get going to not have to fight that fight. So if they know that, hey, I had this rental, but oh, by the way, we contacted them and we even put on our site that, hey, all of our park rentals for twenty-four, we're replacing the parking. See, odds that there's a bulldozer sitting where the merry-go-round goes could happen. If that's a problem, then. Another part. Right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, just the information that you shared, you said Yellow Banks doesn't have any reservations, right?
No, for the month of May.
And then Williams has no shelter at all. So maybe we can go ahead and put those on the surplus first and then time would allow those to be bid on. And then we can move forward from there.
And part of, part of it is that we blocked out that they couldn't, we couldn't take reservations at Yellow Banks. Once we got a set schedule from them for at least them arriving and delivering in, you know, in April, beginning of May. We made sure, we looked at what was, what we had rented at that point. And also, like I said, based on the community parks, we looked at Yellow Banks, both shelters. Neither one were reserved. We're like. That's a great starting point because we don't have to displace anything that's already been taken in. And then Kennedy, because the group is an adult-based group that plans on using it on Sunday, Thursday, Friday, and that's the only reservations we have for the entire month. Was that would be another one because it would, and it would also, starting that one on May sixth, they would be done prior to the rental. The actual schedule, the first one on Sunday, the night that I believe it is. It would actually be done with the installation by that point. So that's how we kind of based our schedule on, based on our Zoom meeting. And it is, and it is, like I said, it's one of those things where. In hindsight, we probably should have looked at not taking reservations this year. You know, just because we knew, but they also told us it could be late summer. Well, most of our reservations are done by Liberty. So. It never really came into my thoughts, I should say, because. They're gonna be available most of the year. You know, if we get them ripped out beginning of August and they start installation. Literally at that month, you know, most of our rentals take, take place in June, July because of graduation parties, et cetera. And. I should have thought about it. I didn't. You know.
Is it more of like a liability and inconvenience thing that if they're rented the shelters, that there might be equipment?
It's, it's, it is possible, yes, inconvenience. I mean, because these family parties have little kids.
Yeah.
It's not just.
Playing around on a bulldozer or having half a swing set up or something.
Yeah.
So I get it. I mean, I'm trying to visualize like half of it's ripped up over here. There's dirt mounds and everything else in the back hole.
And we we started preparations just by taking pictures of all the structures. We had them ready to go. But without a timeline. Like I said, in my head, it was, do we want to schedule them to all be ripped out by the end of May and then have nothing available for the, for the entire season?
Well, that's not all true. We've got two elementary schools in the village.
Like, yeah, I guess it's, it's, it's my fault, because that's what I was thinking.
Well, you already made those reservation. I think is we just can't do anything about it or you can call them cancel. But you can't do that. It's already done. Let's just move on. Let's take a next step. What we wanna do.
Well, fortunately, unfortunately, two of the three most popular parks for reservations. Are the ones that are gonna get done first.
Right.
Which is Kennedy, Yellow Banks. Mock Mueller's a second, actually, not third, but Mock Mueller's not gonna replace this year.
But Kennedy is adults, so we really don't have to worry about.
Right, for that one. Yeah.
I would think just playing now by ears. I mean, right now you can deal with what you have.
Probably not take any more reservations.
We're gonna make a motion. I'd like him to read it, what they have at the bottom of this.
For this evening, really, the action is regarding whether or not those, those two park place sets could be removed by staff. The.
Yeah, it's more for us directing that.
Yes, it was, so it wouldn't be determined about reservations. It would be about those removals.
Can I, I move to approve having staff remove playground equipment at Kennedy and Yellow Banks and allow staff to determine. If any others will have to be removed by staff throughout the playground installation project.
I'll second. Discussion.
Yes, I think it's a terrible idea. I, I think we should wait. I don't think they have to install on May sixth. I think we have a pool to set up and get running that. We're not short-staffed. I think we're full staff now, thankfully, with the new hire here the other day. But. We don't have the staff resources to do this. And if you actually read what was on there, it says. Allow staff to determine if others will have to remove by staff throughout the playground installation process. We're again setting staff up for failure. Just like we did by not giving them a timeline to set this stuff on public surplus. I think you should waive the fees for the year, contact all the folks that have rentals, tell people that will rent for the rest of the time, hey, you're gonna rent the park, but just so you know. Or or turn rentals off for the year. All the people that have rentals will refund your money at no cost. But. The the cost is significant to the taxpayer to do it this way versus what was proposed is actually a net gain to the taxpayer.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
And there's discussion and I am doing so. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Well, I understand. I understand, but what I'm saying is we gotta vote on it. And then if it is up and down, whatever is gonna work out. And I understand your discussion. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Quick question. I mean, if. We go and put the other parks on surplus and just say they need to be down by. July one or something like that and a park doesn't get a new playground then until September, is that an issue? So I think that would probably be the best way forward is just get those up and going right now and. You can put those out there that parks may not have a playground part of the summer due to. New playgrounds arriving throughout the year or something.
Would this original motion kind of facilitate that? Basically allow you guys to do whatever you need to? I mean, there's not a lot of.
No, it just, I I guess it just kind of.
Not a lot of information out here. I mean, as far as like, I mean, we understand that your situation that you're in, but I think. I mean, we're all gonna operate in the best interest of the community and the facility of the parks and our staff. I think it's an understanding of the conversation that we're having right now. I don't know if we need to note that.
The minutes will note that I.
Right.
If that's, and I, the other piece what Michael is bringing up is if if they would all be listed and they would be all taken down at a certain point in time. Let's say it's the same bidder and they choose to do it all at the same time. We certainly could do some signage at the park to say, we're sorry for the inconvenience. Here's the location of the parks that have the replaced equipment.
I guess it's a great idea.
Along with follow-up calls to the reservations already made. Yeah, but something like Williams Park, if it went next, there wouldn't be any resort, that would just be a sign to say, you know, the, there's new equipment installed at Kenny, Kennedy and Yellow Banks. Because and then we can, if there was reservations at the, at Mock Mueller, but that won't get changed this year, we can let them know.
Get this on the website too?
Yeah.
The other thing is, if we get no bidders, then we're hamstrung because we can't do anything.
And it's to be.
You just told, if you tell us that we can't, staff can't make that decision.
Exactly.
And we have to go back.
You gotta come back.
So I mean, some extent, I think it has to be.
Yeah.
A mixture of both.
Sure.
Because we did have, there was a playground piece of equipment on Wisconsin surplus. When we had our other auction going. And there was a bid, but the end, the entire summer to remove it. It was at twelve hundred dollars the last I looked as far as what somebody was willing to pay for it and reuse. It was. You know, probably fifteen years newer than the ones we have, which doesn't justify, you know, the amount, but there was a bit bids on it. So but like I said, we'd have to come back if they're not bidding on. So I still ideally would like to remove Yellow Banks, Kennedy, so we can get the process going. And then if we could list the rest of them.
Would you want a, an amendment then saying that if no bids are received, staff has the ability to remove them? So we're having to wait for a board meeting?
So I'd like to make that amendment then. That was my motion. I think I could do that. I don't, it doesn't matter, I guess, but.
I'm sorry, can I, can I discuss one more thing? When to be, when to make more sense to do Kennedy and then Williams because Williams doesn't have a shelter? And leave Yellow Banks.
We're taking advantage of Yellow Banks not being booked the entire month of May and it'll be done in May.
Oh.
They would both be done, both structures at Yellow Banks would be done in May. They can only do two. And there's two at Yellow Banks, there's one at Kennedy. So actually two structures at Yellow Banks.
And you're doing both of them.
They're doing both, one on the east side and one on the west side by, by each one of the shelters. So there'd actually be three structures going up during the month of May.
Okay.
Go ahead. So I'd like to make an amendment to that too. If there are no bidders, allow staff to proceed.
Oh, second that.
Second, Damon. Okay. Other discussion.
I would like to see a date so we don't fail staff. I, I personally take the fault for failing staff by not putting a date on this. So now we're in the shoes that we are.
Oh, can you put a date on that, Sean?
Yeah, we want it. Let's do.
Well, if we, if we say we list it this week, it's out for auction for two weeks, we give them a month to remove.
Whatever you put and.
That's what I'm saying. We give them a month to remove.
Yeah, you guys understand that obviously it needs to be done quickly.
That way. You know, we keep moving ahead with it.
Right.
Instead of delaying it, like just say a month following the end of the auction. Is that, I mean, is that workable or?
I, I don't know what the conversation was that you had with the play structure. If I had that conversation, I would say we're taking all of our stuff down on June first and the next week you're gonna put all our playgrounds in, but I didn't make that phone call and I don't run the parks. I do stuff different than you do stuff. That's why.
Their original, they originally said they weren't gonna have anything until the end of summer.
Yeah, right. And it's a week, we can have per structure.
Yeah, thank, I'm sorry, one last question. You said you gotta bid for twelve hundred dollars for one of the play, play structures to be.
That was one that was on Wisconsin surplus.
Right, so.
It wasn't ours. It was at a school.
Is it roughly the same size?
No, it was smaller, actually. It doesn't matter if it's a dollar, Jasper. It doesn't cost.
Actually matter. So.
Really?
Yeah, well, if we're paying staff to go do it, we're gonna put it up on auction. What is, if we're paying twelve hundred to get it, we're not removing it.
No.
Did I misunderstand that?
Put it on auction. The, the motion that was made in February.
So our staff removing it, it doesn't matter to you what they're getting paid now or what we pay somebody else to do.
Jasper, the motion that was made in February at.
I don't, we're not talking about your motion in February. We're trying to fix it right now.
I understand that. And that's relating to this, but we're talking.
I'm trying to get that concept of what it's gonna cost when we're the others. So if we're gonna get eight hundred dollars for scrap and then.
Yes.
Versus twelve hundred dollars to have somebody do it. And it's gonna be facilitating our time and not take up our staff to do other things because you are getting ready for summer and everything else. What, what, what is that there? If it's twelve hundred bucks for somebody else to remove?
On the auction site, they bid twelve hundred dollars, they're doing the removal.
Right.
That's what we would put ours out for, to somebody to pay us to remove the play structures, not the bills to remove them.
Right.
They remove them and they can scrap them, they can reuse them, whatever they wanna do. So if we get bids, then we're not spending those staff time.
But we're also waiting six weeks to do it. Or more.
Because we didn't start.
Your May timeline and it'll mess up the rest of something.
Unless we are allowed to do those, the old banks and Kennedy initially.
And you know it in two weeks of the auction.
And then with the rest of the mode for auctions.
Yes, I think that's my point. We're waiting six weeks on that. We might get twelve hundred dollars, but it pushes everything else out. I think that's my point, we're waiting six weeks on that, we might get twelve hundred dollars, but it pushes everything else out. Versus us just taking it out, scrapping it, maybe we could be a hundred dollars for scrap. The cost difference. And you're getting ready for everything else too.
Uh okay, just let's.
Okay, my motion was to allow staff to remove Kennedy and Yellow Banks. And get the thing ready for installation of the new playground equipment. And then to allow them to use their discretion if they need to remove the other ones with the amendment. That they would be allowed to put the remaining. Playground equipment on auction, and they would have. One month after the auction ends to have it removed. Correct? All right, thank you, I got lost.
I'll second.
Okay. Well, no, we have a motion. Yeah, we had the amendment was to allow them to um. Put the rest of the playground equipment on the um auction in that we have. One month or, yeah, one.
No, the amendment is for the staff to remove the equipment if it receives no bids.
Okay. First, we're gonna vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. opposed, I have. Now we're gonna vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
I have it.
And Nate, you're gonna get something on the website. Thank you.
All right. You know what you have to do, right?
Yep.
Okay.
No action on contacting renters or whichever, that's all it says discretion.
All right. Item fifty four.
Carry on.
Discussion and action on roof panel repair at Sand Hill and Mac Miller. Let me ask you this. If we repair that, is it cheaper than replacing it?
Yes.
Because I look at some of the pictures, it's gonna take some doing for him to do it.
Yeah, and and part of it is. I'm not as familiar with concrete repairs, say, somebody that. Contracts with somebody to do bridge deck repairs or dam repairs, so following the approval from the board to move forward with the. Sand Hill and Mock Miller roof panel repairs or replacement, I met with a contractor. Um and he's like, well, why don't you repair? And so, he's like, we can sound the roofs, find out how far back the concrete has deteriorated. And then come up with a cost estimate for, you know, how many square foot needs to be replaced.
Right.
Um so, and you're familiar with this too, and it's company that has a niche in that market where they do bridge deck repairs. They pour it in place, they form it in place. Um so, they gave us a cost estimate to re, you know, basically cut out the existing and repair. And then also recoat the roofs to prevent future deterioration of it once they're repaired.
Did he say how it's gonna repair it, Michael or William?
Yeah, it's in the contract as far as.
Read the contract, I didn't see said, what the procedure is gonna use exactly.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's multiple things in there, like I said, it's not something I'm necessarily super. Up to date with, but um the cost is fifteen to twenty-three, the initial cost estimate just for the two repair panels. Was thirteen thousand, that didn't include removal, replacement, crane, et cetera. And then not recording the other ones that are, that will start deteriorating also. Um so, basically, they're removing the existing material, pour in place, replacement rebar. Um pouring in new rebar, attaching a new section to it, um and then they're using a, I think it was a permiflex. Two coats of permiflex coning on top of the roof, seal the entire structure back to.
The sounding already?
You did sounding already, yeah. So it's fifteen, fifteen square feet and two square feet. For the two roofs.
All right, let's, yes.
Um there's extensive discussion on exploring alternates for the roof such as steel, wood, and other materials of the last meeting, what were the results of those?
Uh well, between the, like, replacing with wood, which would be removing the concrete structurally sound. It wouldn't, the structure is counts on those roof panels as far as structure replacement. Um and as far as enclosing it with like a steel roof panel, they've said it's not an efficient way, and it would look. Out of place to try to wrap concrete with steel material. Um that was something I talked over with contractor, um it was just the one contractor that I did meet with, just because they are especially company that. Deals with those types of repairs. Um and just with concrete structure, you know, covering it with the steel. They didn't feel like it was a feasible option, but like I said, the wood, they felt like you're losing the strength and the load. Of the concrete structure, so the roof panels are welded and tied to the walls in multiple pieces. So you put wood up there, it's like we hold the strength that it would as a structure. That was decided to be.
No, I have like eleven more.
Okay, no, I was just gonna ask if they, because I understand they're they're tied together, they're cast in place, the rebar's probably going through, because these are storm structures.
So they, so there's there's, there's steals tabs and they're welded from piece to piece.
Right. And they're cast in port in place.
They're not port in place.
They're not.
So it's a prefabricated structure where each piece is brought here, set in place, then they're welded together.
But like putting a shell or something over them, over the top of the roof, because that's where most degradation is, right?
Right.
But none, none, nobody wanted to touch that, say one.
Yeah, and and, well, the deterioration would continue if we didn't replace it with something solid underneath. So, you'd you'd have to remove the concrete to put wood up. And then the wood not, would not be the strength, and the steel, yes, you can cover the concrete, but still they're curried underneath.
So you have to repair the concrete first.
You have to repair the concrete.
Gotcha.
What is the warranty on the work from Norcon?
I'm not sure. They estimated the length of the repair would be ten plus years.
Will Norcon.
Go ahead.
Will Norcon guarantee the remainder of the roof does not fail for a certain period of time? I know they sounded it, so is there, are they giving it the the thumbs up guarantee of, hey, look, the rest of this roof is good for another two thousand years? Like concrete should be?
I think what's gonna happen is the new concrete they pour it on lasts longer, and the existing material sitting in there.
Sure, so we've got fifteen, nineteen square feet being repaired. Full and partial depth, there's probably three hundred square feet of total roof, so we fixed nineteen out of three hundred square feet. What I'm saying is you're gonna throw fifteen thousand dollars to fixing nineteen out of three hundred square feet.
There's two of them.
No, I understand that. What what I'm concerned with, and this is alluding to the same. It's a great tie in, so we talked about, you know, this is similar stuff that we do on bridge decks, got a bridge deck right down the road here, uh over the O'Clear River. Um it seems like every couple of years, we gotta. Band-aids on cancer on that thing, and it doesn't look great.
I think we can compare that because there is a traffic, there is vibration, there is a lot of issue with the bridge. But this doesn't have all the. Issue with it, so it's a little bit different, it has a load on it, which is just not, but it's designed to handle sixty pounds. As a rule in Wisconsin.
Um what was the cost to install, so it was thirteen thousand dollars for the panels, what did Norcon want to to hang those panels?
I didn't even get the cost for it, because they they thought just based on their recommendation would be to repair it, because the cost would be. A lot more to actually replace the panels.
Yeah, I think there's a lot more homework to do. I move not to approve the contract with Norcon to complete the repairs at San Phil and Mac.
What was your motion?
I move not to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fail, lack of a second. Is there other motion?
I move to approve the contract from Norcon to complete the repairs at Sand Hill and Mac.
Is there a second?
One second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
I have it, thank you. Item fifty five, discussion and action on twenty twenty-four crack ceiling bet result. Michael?
We bid the crack ceiling for twenty twenty-four, uh we had three bidders on the project with Thunder Road being the low bidder. Um was uh, oh twenty thousand overestimate, um however, in our overall street maintenance uh. Bidding, um the asphalt overlays came in well under budget, and uh the GSB was also about twenty thousand under, so. As to the crack ceiling and the GSB eighty-eight, these kind of even each other out.
So, who's recommending?
We'd recommend uh awarding it to uh Thunder Road for uh one hundred thousand, two hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
Move to recommend the village board award the twenty twenty-four crack ceiling project to Thunder Road for a total price of one hundred thousand, two hundred dollars.
One second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Item fifty six, discussion and action on twenty twenty-four asphalt rejuvenator bet result.
Move toward the twenty-four Gilsonai pavement ceiling project, Scott Construction Inc. for a total price of eighty thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars. And sixty-nine cents.
Second.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Item fifty seven, discussion and action twenty twenty-four asphalt overlay bet result.
I move to award the twenty-four asphalt overlay project to R C Pavers based on their base bid of three hundred five thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars. I also move to direct staff to utilize remaining street improvement budget to bid additional street repair maintenance projects for the twenty-four construction year.
Second.
A second? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it. Thank you. Item fifty eight, discussion and action on purchase of asphalt pusher.
Move to purchasing asphalt pusher attachment from Suderski Equipment for twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars.
Discussion? Pause there second, I'm sorry. Discussion?
What do we use currently, Michael, are we borrowing it?
Borrowed from the Sea of Wassa a little bit.
But that has to do with scheduling, if they're using it, whether or not we can use it.
Yeah, and uh. I guess kind of the uh. We should have a lot more last year than what we did.
So this is more to facilitate our operations.
Yeah. Ryan's here, if you have any questions.
Yes, Ryan? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it, thank you. Item fifty nine, discussion and action on Fuller Street in Schofield Avenue intersection option.
Um I guess just looking for direction, uh last month, the board did not award the contract to Becker Hoppy to uh. Design the realigned roadway. Um so I guess at this point, I. A little stuck with uh, I have a motion that uh we should realign the roadway, but then the proposal to design that was denied, so just. Either looking for clarity to go back with the original alignment of the roadway. Which is what uh the Public Works Committee did recommend uh last week, Monday, uh was the original alternate two. Which had some uh slight modifications at the existing Fuller and Schofield Avenue intersection. But left it within the current Fuller Street uh right away.
I think that that uh option also was recommended by DOT, DOT had a nice report on that. Would you go to the traffic and a delay and and a cost and. And also they consider massacre. Stoplight or help out. So what's your wish?
So I had asked some questions uh to Jamie and Michael, and and we got some of that data, and then I think so it is just, just good for discussion, so. Three viable, one one is do nothing. Right, two is revise it and that to. To cut that corner and make it closer to. Correct, and that has a cost of approximately sixty thousand dollars, and there's no additional, or that, that's the additional design fee, is that right?
That's not a design fee, that's just kind of construct, construction cost above and beyond what uh would be.
To do nothing.
To do nothing, yep.
Very well, okay, and then to realign it, we had no numbers for that, um for option three, which is what? Two months ago, the board had voted, and then last month, we voted not to. Fund the dollars to redesign the realignment. But we had no data to back it up, so for the the side street side control with realigned for like intersection. Just round numbers, Michael was working on that, and it came to six hundred twenty-five thousand plus right away acquisition, is that correct?
Yeah.
And we don't.
Yeah, the right away is kind of the, the big wild card of what uh, what that would be. I did talk with the, the property owners, and I guess they would expect that if uh. Talk to them today, this afternoon, and if we did vacate uh Fuller Street as it is. Um they would want full use of that, so that would mean our utilities could be underground. So that would, they would require, I guess, or that that'd be a stipulation is that they would want that land. Free and clear for their full use of development.
So that means you have to move the utility.
Correct.
And that's where that six twenty-five number came from.
So that would be a cost above and beyond.
Remind me uh, because it's been a couple of months, we've been talking about this now, but um. Moving that street over was kind of part of the master plan for that roadway, right? To kind of correct that a little bit, I mean, I guess my.
Yeah, so I I guess. When we create future transportation maps. Sometimes you go, hey, that's a good idea, and then you start looking at it, and you sometimes go, maybe that was a bad idea, or maybe it wasn't warranted. Uh if it's in the plan, it just means, hey, when the opportunity arises, we should take a look at it a little bit more to see if that's something that should be done now. So, we have bridges and other future roadways on our maps and our corridor plans that. Twenty years from now, somebody might say that, why were they thinking that, there's no need for that yet. You know, maybe forty years from now, fifty years from now, so. Um I I guess I try to caution, the the planning document is there to help you kind of think outside the box a little bit, like if these things happen, maybe we want to do that. And if you have it in the plan, you get, I guess, bonus points, and you're looking for grants and things like that, because it was already thought of, it was planned. Versus always being reactionary to what's going on, but I guess it doesn't always necessarily mean you have to do what's in the plan.
Right, because I mean, we, you've done quite a bit of work on moving this over, talking to Arrow, talking to the property owners there, whether or not. Move that road in line with the uh, the road to the south.
Yeah.
We done, we we uh, we talked about not to.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of, I'm I'm with you, I'm not really sure. What pushes one way or the other on this, but. Because DOT didn't say it was an issue, right?
And based on traffic counts and turning movements, accidents, it it wasn't anything that would have been flagged as, wow, you need to do something here.
Right, right, there's not, there's not a substantial thing from law enforcement or anything, there's not a lot of accidents happening there.
I think it averages about one crash a year based on the.
Yeah.
Traffic.
I mean, it's a tough quarter, everybody, you know, it's tough to see traffic coming, but I guess if if we're really stagnant on what we're gonna do with it, there's no. Cry out from, you know, I guess this is real law enforcement that, you know, we have to do it right now. Because it's a substantial amount of money for what Jim is saying. That we'll probably put somewhere else, the road repairs, something of that that nature, but it sounds like the board really doesn't have a clear direction to give you.
I guess the, any direction be then to either say, go back to just. I guess I need something, because right now the.
It's in there. It's in there.
Or action is realign it, but I need something that says, I'm good, we, we want you to keep it as is or.
Hey, Bart?
I use that intersection a lot, um, and it is at times, especially if you hit it right around time the school gets out or something, but then it is, I don't care if you're coming out on the other side or where you're at, it's going to be a problem. I don't, if you can tweak that intersection and get it so it's a little more user friendly, I don't see that we need to relocate the whole thing first.
Do you have an option for that?
I think so far, excuse me, so far, everybody's recommendation is to correct the existing intersection and not to spend the money and put the stop sign there for forty years or whatever, so that's the recommendation to exist because it's most economical way to do it all. So, yes.
Uh, can you pull up a aerial view of that area? The talks that you had, Michael, with, uh, the property owner, they own the property on the other side of the street as well, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And so if they wanted full use of that, then we could take two smaller parcels and make a bigger parcel and make that utilize that to the highest and best use, right? That whole evergreen area on the right side there is all same owner.
It is, yeah.
Where the cell tower is or they might own that.
They own that too.
So then that entire block would be one piece and it wouldn't be cut in half, what's the size of that parcel? It's got to be acres, right? Six?
They're each about three and a half. That, that house is on the same parcel as, uh, the bar.
So.
The, the property owner does like the fact that it's on a corner and they've got two corner lots.
Um, so they would prefer to have it two lots or they would prefer to have it one big lot?
The general instinct I get from them is they like having two corner lots. Unless somebody else has.
They just come online, eh? Always has its owner.
I just said I.
Okay.
Would like to.
Well, yeah, so my thought on that is, I, I totally get what you're saying, Jasper, like, gosh, if we're going to do that, like, now is the time to do it. If we're going to do this, you do it now, because Fuller's been there, when was the last time Fuller was rebuilt? When dinosaurs walked down it?
I think there's dinosaur tracks actually.
It was in the eighties.
Okay, so forty years ago, right? So forty years from now would be our next opportunity to do it, otherwise you're paying whatever it costs to do that, let's say a quarter mile.
Something, it's like eight hundred feet.
Sure, but you're paying for eight hundred feet twice. It might be a fool to do that.
But the other side of it is we invest our money today and we don't get the use of it at a percent until four years from now, add the interest to it, that add up quite a bit money. Yes, Jess.
Well, I'm sorry, Michael, when is Fuller scheduled to actually be redone?
Uh, next year.
Make that decision next year then, or?
No, it has to get designed this year for.
Right.
He's working on the design right now.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, and we're pretty good from the Mountain Bay Trail heading north to Ross, it's just trying to figure out what we're.
Wasn't there something about the trail too that we were, we were discussing last time? Crosswalk with the trail having to come through there with the, the master plan of the trails too as well? That was going to come if the new, if the.
Yeah, so we would put a pedestrian combination there and if maybe we can do a special crossing there, so.
Maybe you have to provide some driveway or, or road for that little house that's there.
And I guess that's all part of some of the unknown costs of what, uh, that would look like in the futures.
So if that's vacated, I mean, you can just close it off on Schofield Ave and leave it, right? You don't have to tear the road up, pull the pipe out, put the road back, right?
I guess that'd all be.
I, I mean, you don't have to tear Fuller up, pull a sewer and water out from underneath Fuller, if you, if you build new sewer and water north and south to align with old costs, so you can just just continue the old one that's there and leave it abandoned under the roadway, right? And if they walk all down that and now that's my my angled parking aero bar runway or whatever, they can do that, right?
Yeah, I guess that. Whatever, I guess, yeah, that'd probably be something that'd be part of the real estate negotiation as if, uh, they're cool with that, we'd do that and, yeah, abandon in place.
Well, they probably like that actually with the parties that they have.
Yeah, because they, yeah. I see as being a huge benefit for them, but I don't want to tie their hands and force them, that's why.
I think they're, I think they'll appreciate that.
Are they on? That's not who the owner was or can we?
They say they wanted to keep the two, two corners.
But they would, then they would own the whole thing and they could redevelop it any way they want it or not, they could sell it as two corners, so.
Keep that intersection.
What are we, right now, we're just looking at.
What to do.
Or, yeah, I mean, do you want me to go back and talk to them one more time and say, okay, what is your preference? I guess I can
I.
And we go with that or?
Are we, so I, I guess, are we looking at, I know there was three plans out of memory, uh, Old Castle coming right up and connecting to Fuller, basically continuing north. And there was another plan to widen out the existing Fuller on the Schofield to make it a little more easier for people.
You're just going to trim that median down and make that so it's more of a perpendicular.
I think that, uh, drawing up that sketch.
There was a substantial cost of the new road though, wasn't there?
Six fifty, six twenty-five, PDF, yeah. It was never called out for what the new road was, it was only ever called out for what the, the Roundabout was and that was two million dollars. And I don't know if it's two million dollars plus the six twenty-five then plus the right away.
Yes.
So it, it, it was two million included, the roadway and the Roundabout. So if you took the six twenty-five out of that, you know, the one point four, the right away cost is unknown.
And we're doing acquisition for land too, right?
That, yeah, so that's what I mean by the right away.
It's still unknown on some parts of that. Yeah, okay, but we're not doing the Roundabout, that's what the.
Correct, yeah.
As a village that, I remember I want to do that.
All in was the alone that one.
So right now, it would just be a stop sign if you're coming down Fuller, get to Schofield or coming off of Old Castle. There's a light that's scheduled to come in on the next intersection. So can we just, uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to have this drawing here. She's just part of this.
Scroll up a little bit.
Yes.
That's right above it.
Um. Who's the designer?
So our designer on this project is Becker Happy, so Taddy is, uh, is a traffic engineer who was subconsulted or sub, uh, hired up by Becker Happy to do the intersection analysis.
Okay, so, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, uh, so I'd like to motion to, uh, staff to proceed with alternate five without the Roundabout.
So that's the motion that I currently have, that's what I'm operating under.
Yeah.
Well, here's my concern, you're going to spend two million dollars or what, plus one and a half million dollars to put your stop sign.
You're going to spend six twenty-five to put a stop sign to it, plus right away.
No, you got to buy it right away, yes, that's, that's and then the road. We have something like to get up there.
I, I made the motion, if there's not a second, we'll just go from there.
So I, I guess, just to clarify, your motion is what I'm operating under, it's just that last month, when I brought the design proposal back to do that, that design proposal got denied.
It was with the Roundabout.
No, it wasn't.
It was to align it with the stop sign. It was to go to the other side that chose the Roundabout.
Can we go back up next, please?
Yeah, it was to do that, but not with a round vote with a stop sign on the north side on Fuller's.
The recommended motion would be for the picture above would be alternate two.
Yes, so what?
Alternate two would be to just cut that median down and do almost nothing.
And keep it as crossing.
Keep it as it is. And as an additional sixty thousand dollars.
So this was sixty and the other one's six twenty-five plus.
Correct.
Okay, well, I made a motion, so if nobody seconds it, we'll, we'll go from there.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second?
You're, you're making a motion on this one.
The other one, going into Old Castle.
At that time, is there a second? There's no second motion that time.
So I'll make the next.
So to clarify that.
Give me time off, there's a motion here.
I move to approve the moving forward with alternate two creating a ninety-degree angle for left turns for the Fuller Street and Schofield Avenue intersection.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I have a question.
What?
So with putting the ninety in there, is there any, we have any idea what the acquisition and the cost of the?
So, so the Barb's motion is to leave the intersection where it currently is on the east side of Aero Bar.
I understand that.
So there's no right away, there's no, there's none of that that's necessary to do that. So that's all within the existing right away.
Okay, so we don't have to buy anything to make that happen.
Buy any land to make that one happen.
Okay, we don't have to move utilities or anything else, right?
Correct.
Other discussion?
Yes, to clarify your original motion, that's what the board approved two months ago. So we approved that picture that's on the other one with the stop sign on each end.
Yeah, we talked about it in Public Works. So.
All right.
Anyway. Well, yeah, we're going to, we'll give you something.
We're going to get there.
Yeah.
Not, not the issue is not.
So we have, I'm sorry, do we have a, do you, Mike, do you have any diagram what it's going to look like?
That's more or less what it'll look like.
So that line, they're just going to take that median out there?
Yeah, so it'll just shift everything to the west a little bit so you can.
Okay, square, we're good.
Square up a little better, yeah.
And add the crosswalk, right?
And add the crosswalk on the east side.
And that's for the trail too, right?
Correct, yeah, so, um, this, so Fuller Street will get a multi-use path on the east side, uh, up to Cali Lands to get to the park, so.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
I have it. Mr. Chair? Yes?
Um. I think, uh, law enforcement, fire don't need to be here after there.
There is one more, two more item in here, no, they don't have.
I usually just stay, not a big deal.
Okay.
You might want to stay for that East Nick Avenue.
Which one is all the stuff?
Okay. Item sixty. We want to discuss this item sixty.
Yeah, we were asked just to put it on the board agenda, so we would like to discuss it tonight.
Okay, discussion and action on the village board of the trustee compensation.
Again, we were just asked to place it on the agenda for this evening, um, we can defer this one to next month if, if we wanted to, but we were asked to place to have a conversation about.
What is it? The, they're supposed to get increased or decreased or?
Yeah, we were asking to see if, um, we could possibly increase the amount or have an amount for committee members at top of the board of trustees.
And every per diem, Anna.
Well, according, maybe we should defer it and tell Mark back, he can see, he can.
We can do that.
Okay. Do we need a motion to defer that?
I don't know that we need a motion, we'll just note in the minutes that it'll be deferred to the May agenda.
All right. Item sixty-one. Discussion and action of expanding East Nick Avenue.
I think Jennifer is still online and she wanted to start the conversation, but there was a memo in the packet, um, we had some interest down in that East Nick Avenue area and we talked about it at Plan Commission, Plan Commission had shared that they'd like to see some development in that area, but that was, that would be with the East Nick Road being brought through to County Road J and although the right of way is platted for that to occur, that's not all within the village of Weston's, uh, municipality, it would, it would be within four municipalities, two towns and the village of Croninwater. So, um, we're kind of looking for some input from the board tonight about how the board feels about expansion, um, and that road being placed down there before proceeding, but we have had interest from developers about home development in that area. Jennifer, did I get everything in that?
Yeah, you did, we have been getting some calls, um, Roman's taken some, uh, a bunch of the paper land down there has been sold and developers are starting to purchase it. This is a street that's come up before, uh, because there had been some development pressure in, uh, Croninwater on the south side. Still in play too, with some potential mining, um, beforehand, so, um, the board had talked about this a couple of years ago, I know at one point Keith and Mark had been, um, visiting with the two town chairs, um, and had been talking to Croninwater, it just didn't seem like anybody wanted to put any money into um, extending that road, um. Michael and I have talked about it, we're not comfortable with, right now, everything is shown as future agriculture down there on the future land use map, so there would have to be, um, a comprehensive plan map amendment done before anyone could actually rezone it to anything other than agriculture, so the Plan Commission did, um, talk about it at their meeting. Um, they're okay with development in there if we can get another access point out, they kind of agreed with us, so that's kind of where we're at, just getting some direction from the board. Um, I guess to start discussions again, because I think they kind of fell off with the other communities.
Well, if nobody else wants to put the money, that's, again, Weston going to pay for the road all the way to J and then when we do that, they're going to use the road. But they don't want to spend money on. Yes.
Uh, well, that's kind of was, I think that was the issue that we came up with last time, that especially I think was the town of Reed and Ringo, they weren't interested in any shape, form or manner. And yet we would be, if we did it, we would be putting the road in and then you're asking, well, okay, um, who's going to maintain it? Because it isn't our road, I mean, it is our road if we pay to put it in, but it's not in the village, so it's kind of, um, you know, and at some point, they're going to benefit from it, just as much as we are, so I, I don't know how we can um, tell our taxpayers, well, there was development, we went and built a road for two other, three other townships, you know?
When was the last time we talked?
Well, you said.
It was probably over two years ago, I would think.
Three years ago, yeah.
Two years ago, it, it all started kind of during COVID, I remember being at a meeting in Croninwater with masks and then, um, so it was probably maybe twenty-two, maybe that they were attending town meetings.
Okay.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's just right.
So in the request for consideration, it says it brings up that the road may likely need to have pavement added, do you know if the road's extended, if it would be paved or not? Because that gets very wet and we have dry years or winters like now where it's not that bad, but with it being a narrow road, we've had it to the point where we couldn't even really get squads back there and the village have to take graders out because.
They did some work, I think, last year or year before.
We have about a mile left of road that would need to be improved before it be, uh, considered an all-season road. Wow. So, uh, and that's to the end of Weston, that there's a third of a mile that's in Reed and Ringo that would be brand new, um, out to J. I guess, yeah, so, yeah, we definitely would need to do something, uh, with that final mile of roadway that we share with Croninwater. Croninwater's given out a couple of building permits in the last few years. And that's really why, the only reason that road's been improved is as they've um, allowed houses to get built back there, we've partnered with their road crew and, uh, removed the clay soils and put in, you know, either a sand lift, break or run, um, and then gravel, so it is a gravel road, but uh, if that starts becoming a subdivision and there's, uh, other heavy truck operations there, I, I guess the recommendation would be that it be paved. Uh, just because otherwise that's probably going to get not.
Yeah, as it currently sits, uh, the property on the north side can be developed on twenty acre parcels. So there are the potential for building permits to come in for those properties. But unless something else is done, there can't be a subdivision put in to maximize the property, so that's.
Be having some development that would ha, that could potentially happen on its own and enough that would warrant that anyway. Um, and it's just putting, I mean, I, I just think it's something that needs to be talked about because we're basically just putting a Band-Aid on things, so we don't have an infinite um, amount of land, I'm sitting at a conference listening to people all over the United States complain, um, about the cost of of new homes, of the amount of homes that are supposed to be built in the next five, ten years, um. Uh, we've been talking at the Plan Commission level about needing, you know, new, new lots and, and places, so uh, it's just something that I think we need to talk about, um, because we're just going to keep getting the pressure down there.
So the development that's proposed is, uh,
Uh can you scroll on to three forty?
Hey, can we bring up the map, please?
So there's uh been a concept given to me for. Two uh forty-acre parcels, so there's an eighty. Originally, when this came through, the developer had a lot more land, they now currently own more on the south side, but have two eighties. Um and another party has a hundred and, is it a hundred and sixty Roman?
Hundred and sixty to the to the west, which is currently served by road.
Yeah.
So on on this, so the subdivision that was proposed is in the orange, correct?
Yes.
Uh yeah.
And and where does the physical road end now at the east end of the orange?
The physical, well, so we're talking about uh during the summer or during the spring?
Well, I was there two hours ago, so two hours ago.
You probably were able to get just past the orange there. Uh. Nate, move your mouse to the left. Uh eh to the right, just slightly, right, right there, um probably terminates about right there.
So you can drive to there. I know.
In the springtime, you can get to about where the orange or uh. I guess the purple and pink, is that right? Yeah, to about right there, um is about where I'd be confident saying in the springtime you can get to.
And Michael, you had said where we have improved it. You would feel comfortable with paving that because of the improvement that we've made underneath, but where we haven't made that improvement, it would, that would need to still be brought up.
Correct.
But if we were to put. This proposed development, this is a Jennifer question. There's no sewer and water here, clearly, right?
Right, so they're looking at two acre parcels.
Wait, so two acre parcels, so. You'd have forty homes there?
No, I thought, I don't remember, I thought it was only thirty.
Well, I suppose once you get right away from.
Some wetlands and stuff.
It was like twenty-nine.
What um, sorry, go ahead.
So where I was going with that is, and both the north and south side were designed to be. Developed with the mining and the whole shooting match or just?
Our understanding.
I think originally, the developer had talked back in the early talks about mining on the north side, but it seems like it's only on the south now.
So my question is, uh. Could it get built, what what do we have left? Five hundred feet?
For where?
A thousand feet.
Where can it build?
What's left from Jay, so I'm saying if you came from Jay left, right?
Jay to the west?
Correct, could you build that to serve that subdivision? And not leave the other two miles?
Yeah, I I wouldn't necessarily say we need to pave all the way up to Shory heading west. Um, cause I there there's. How do I put it, so Cometic Street does this little uh snake. Uh so where it starts heading north-south, uh Nate, move your mouth up, right there, stop. So wiggle your mouse there, so about right there, um there to that other point where the purple meets the red. I'd be comfortable saying we could pave over that existing roadway as is. Uh but from that point, heading back to Shory, we would need to redo all that. Uh and then uh, yeah, so the recommend, i- ideally, we would go from Jay and encourage people to. Use Jay as their main in an, you know, access point to that subdivision.
Well, they have an automobile built in the last fifty years, they well.
Yeah.
They care about it.
Yeah. So, yeah, so and that's then roughly, it's a third of a mile between Ringel and Reed to our boundary and then. Uh three quarters of a mile, so a little over a mile to go that way.
And the right of way there is only fifty feet, correct?
I I think it's a sixty-six foot right of way.
You heard that?
Sure. Townships usually were. Pretty good at getting sixty-six feet.
Yeah, I think it's sixty-six all the way out.
It is fifty feet over by Shory, kinda coming off of Cometic. Yeah, it's sixty-six feet.
So what, uh just for clarification, you're thinking, Jim, coming from Jay, heading west, uh going to.
I I don't see any cost benefit to to pay.
Going all the way to the west.
Correct.
Right, so just.
Even. It's even marginal to do this, I don't know how you work with. The other two municipalities, they don't wanna pay anything.
Yeah, and I I I would like to motion to just staff to move forward with at least starting. Conversations with uh. I guess the other three and I will go from there, what they say, cause really, it's up to them, whether or not they're gonna have a. A sharing this, I think we had this conversation a couple of years ago and and they they said they couldn't put any money into it. Okay, but let's flip it over here, everybody's screaming for a house, housing prices are nuts, getting rent is nuts, but try scream places to. And if we have somebody from development saying we wanna develop this, but house up there. I think it's worth at least conversation to see what it's gonna cost us and and to try to have that, say, okay, well, at the end of the day. They wouldn't help us out in this project, or maybe at the end of the day, we eat it and we serve our community by allowing more homes to be built.
Alright, what's your motion?
Allow staff to proceed with starting communications for development.
I will second that. Can I add an amendment to your motion or recommend? It is just from the east side, working from Jay West to the.
And where we cut it off.
Which whichever points. That a subdivision will be built.
Um Jennifer, could you, are you able to kind of identify that and give Mike an idea of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a couple of homes where it's that, yeah, we've got it. It goes to to where he already has the road built.
Okay. So we have, do we need a motion on the amendment?
I have a motion and a second on the floor.
Amendment, second to the amendment?
I'll second the amendment. We got the amendment.
What's the amendment?
The only proceeds of.
To to, in these talks and proceedings and planning, to plan from Highway J West only to the point. Where the potential subdivision would be. And only paved, only asphalt from Jay to that point, not rebuild the rest of the road, all the way up.
Is there a second?
I'll say yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, just a question. So you're saying. I and I'm not sure where this road finally becomes passable or not, I mean, I've tried to get stuck in there for a while, you know, um but. Are you saying that you're just gonna go back just so far not to where the road actually is, so people couldn't get to Jay?
No. And as far as like.
I guess you lost me. We gotta get out.
This is like. A snowmobile trail.
Yes.
I was I was there two hours. So you could drive it, oh, I can drive it, pick up, I I can give you the keys, you can drive it, like to here. Okay, from there to here, there's one or two big mud holes and puddles and creeks and stuff and big ruts and. Wow, you can't take my pickups or whatever. To read or I think I get it.
Right.
But this subdivision, I believe, is planned here and here, maybe here, I don't know what these other purple, church or whatever. But. Uh there's there's like five homes from here to here. And. Three homes from here to here, it makes zero sense to spend a gazillion dollars to pay this whole shooting match for five people.
Right.
It makes a lot of sense to create a road for this short area. For eighty homes.
Okay, but you're connecting it with the existing road.
But we're not, we're gonna stop the asphalt right there at the entrance to the subdivisions and.
I just wasn't.
No, no, that's a good clarification.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't leave a gap of.
Well, I just want, yeah, I was just gonna say, or a mud puddle, you know, and here, there's a mud puddle here and then there's road there, so.
That's a good clarification.
Okay, you clear on the amendment and the motion?
I am.
Okay, first we're gonna hold. What on the amend, all in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I have it, now all in favor of the motion. Start discussion with the coroner whether and other community to see the cost. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I have. Thank you. Alright. Give that. Well, you go to the closed session. Yeah, pleasant to Wisconsin statue nineteen forty-five. Grantis one, Grantis chief, comparing with the League of Hands Council. For governmental body, who'd render oral for written. Advice concerning the str- strategy. To be adopted by the body with the respect, relegation in which. It is or is likely to become involved to vet. Marathon County case number twenty twenty-two dash C dash four twenty-six. Do I have to read the rest of that?
Yes, you should, it's most thing, possession.
Continuing the closed session, pleasant to Wisconsin statue. Nineteen forty-five, Grantis one, Grantis eat deliberately. Or negotiating, purchasing or property. Investing our public fund. Or conducting other specific public businesses. Whenever competitive or bargaining reason required to close session to that.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Did we do the motion?
Yeah, I can just spread the motion.
Second.
So are you the second?
That's fine, she can have it.
We made a motion. You made a motion, Jim?
Well, you made, you made the motion by reading the.
Okay, you second that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Sagami?
Hi.
Urmling?
Hi.
Hardinger?
Aye.
And Sano?
Yes.
And Wyland? It's true.
Okay, shall I do that again?
Yeah.
Okay, Marathon County case number twenty twenty-two. Dash four twenty-six, no action to be taken on this item. Second, nominal payment parcel report revision for establishing initial offering on the right of way. For Weston Avenue, Grantis cross county. Utility route. We must have issues. Basically.
Your proposed language for a motion?
Yeah, uh.
Move to approve that?
So the, yeah, it was in the, the proposed language is.
I could read it, so it um an appropriate motion would be, and you could say so moved, that you would move that the nominal payment fee for personal report revisions for Weston Avenue. Cross-country utility route and appraisals for parcels eight, eleven seventeen, eighteen nineteen, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. Located between Von Kennel and Ryan Street.
I'll say a second. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I have it. Other item, there is a report for establishing initial offering on right of way for Weston Avenue. One kennel to Ryan Street.
That was an update.
Yeah, that one got, that one was partnered with the other one.
Okay. We did it at the same time.
Motion for both of those.
Okay.
Jamie did a great.
I did break.
Alright, attorney to fill out, man? The staff to fill out?
Yes.
Yes?
Um Roberts Rules of Order Training, when is it realistic to see and then, I know you had issues getting.
I'll reach back out to the League of Municipalities and see if their trainer could come in, the gentleman I had reached out from the extension didn't reply back. Um so I will, I'll reach out to them and see. I know there was an a conversation too with one that was scheduled to reach out to neighboring municipalities and have them see if they wanted to join also, so. I'll put that one back towards the front burner.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, remark from trustee, Jim?
Yes. Um. I'm sad that our cheat code is one way, Roberts Rules of Order, I looked on my laptop and everybody's here now and see those, so.
Oh, no, they must have, I'm, I apologize, they must have got moved when we set up for the election.
Oh.
Well, I'm so glad.
And didn't get put back.
Because.
They're probably in the closet.
That was the other mark that I got, fantastic job of the election, everyone on staff, uh. I've, it was night and day different, how much better it was from. The last one that we had here to this one, the only complaint that I heard, well, two complaints that I heard, one was slush and snow outside, which even that, I think.
I think they did take care of that, because when they made that comment, the staff were out there stalling and also there were.
And I pushed a shovel too, who's saying, we did what we could, you can't stop it from falling from the sky at all, you can do as much as you can do.
Sure.
Um but but the redesign, the other complaint that I heard was the long walk, right, so you come in here and go all the way around, but what they don't realize is that long walk. Wouldn't be as long if there. Was a bunch of people here in line, right, so I would much rather wait here inside for an hour to make it all the way around, if there's ten thousand people that showed up here to vote. Then wait outside in a line. In the snow. Yeah, the signage worked really well, the parking, the the overflow parking, uh just everybody did a great job, staff volunteer, so thank you. We got a lot of work done for that.
Were there quite a few undervotes, from my understanding?
Um I don't, you know, I'm sorry, I don't recall how many undervotes there were.
We did the math.
Or are you talking like for?
Well, on the, on the ballot.
But I'd have to look, I mean, I can, I can give you an idea if you want me to text you tomorrow or send an email.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jessica?
No, sir.
That's not funny.
I I know it's not funny.
Because people can't read a ballot, that's not funny.
Yeah. I was, I was laughing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
No, just other than I thought was kind of funny is the only comment I was, they thought you had too many people working, the amount of.
Oh, wow.
Uh you know what, no matter what you do, somebody.
But I looked at.
And that's a guarantee.
Really?
So, but uh uh I have one comment. I had the two of the YMCA members approaching me at the YMCA. And they ask. If we can put the pickleball court instead of a Mac Miller Park. In the east side of the. Uh YMCA, where they had the horses.
Oh, are they gonna be blocked? It's not a bad idea.
Well, there's, there's, I think, some issue with that, one is that. They cannot expect it only to the member of the YMCA.
Yeah.
They should open it.
Yeah, no, if we're gonna build, it's gotta be public.
Well, they want us to contribute to it, but we were gonna contribute to this one. Then they don't have to do the fundraising.
Yeah. I don't, I was like.
They put, let's say if it is one and a half million, they pay to have one, one million.
Oh.
They chip in one million and we pay half a million.
Uh with with the caveat that. There's public outros or?
We have to put that one in there, yes, it should be open to the public.
Yeah.
So. But at least that was.
Donating the land or we'd like, they'd have to donate, are they, are they building?
So they're building it, they can build it. Since it's just. Respect what we want and.
Remarks for tonight, let us take that down, we can have Sean, we can follow up, but just since it's remarks today, I just don't wanna get.
That's just a remark, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So I said, I really can answer, when we're out there, I gotta take it to the board, they have to make a decision.
Yeah.
And we discuss it, we let you know what we wanted. But I know those two guys, they talked to the YMCA.
Yeah.
If they brought out that, they said what they told us, they don't have the horses anymore and they got enough money, they do have the money, there's no question.
Yeah.
And they can raise the money without any difficulty.
And I bet they can help people there to probably flood in here if we're gonna discuss it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very popular thing, my mother goes there and does that.
So anyway, that was my comment. Uh future item, next meeting Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, accept the motion to adjourn.
Oh, would you?
Sorry, uh isn't there a special meeting on twenty nine?
Oh, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, we just, I sent out that email.
Right.
To just kind of keep that date in the back of your mind, and there is going to be one?
Yeah, we got. Uh four public works projects that.
Yeah.
I'd like to get awarded a few weeks earlier, waiting until May twen- I'd like to get awarded a few weeks earlier, waiting until May twentieth.
April, April twenty-ninth at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it wouldn't be a long meeting?
What, which one?
This, on the twenty-ninth in order to approve.
We have uh West Avenue projects out for bid, the Skokie and Wesker intersection. Uh the well for PFAS and East Gel Nick Van Kennel are out for bid.
Six o'clock.
Correct, yeah.
I'll have to attend that one soon.
You said May, I'm sorry, the twenty-ninth of.
Of April, in two weeks.
Yeah. I'll go with that.
You can do it earlier than six, I can't do.
Since six, what about?
We can make it earlier.
Yeah, you can do five.
Yeah, I I have another meeting at six, so.
I can do five.
If it's five and can be. Forty-five minutes or less.
Yeah, mine work for me, five is good.
Five?
Yeah. Are you gonna be out of town?
Yes.
Or you don't know yet?
No, I know, I'll be in Marshmallow.
We can follow up with trustee Cronin and president Maloney too, but then we could try for five o'clock, well, we'll try for five.
I got it in my calendar.
And there won't be any closed session items on that agenda, so if you could attend by zoom two five.
Yeah, it should just be bid results and. Here we have five bidders, so-and-so is the low bid.
Then you wanna put that inspection fee and that stuff in there too?
I could put the Weston Avenue one on there if you want it, or I could wait until public works for that.
Let's bring it to public work because they were part of a decision-making on that.
I'm sorry.
Well, they had half a million dollars inspection fee.
Yeah.
I said we can't approve that unless I see construction scheduled, to see how many days that. And how many hours they're gonna work, then we can discuss it then, awesome. That's a big number.
Yeah, I know it is, so I agree with you, I agree.
Ask the contractor if he's gonna work overtime, because the contractor don't like to work overtime. He doesn't schedule his people for overtime, he put eight hours and he make his costs estimate.
It depends on the contractor. More work than they need.
The one I work with them, that's what the story was and. And when I asked why they're not working, they said they should finish the project on time. That's it. So let's make sure of that, because he had a lot of overtime on his cost estimate.
Yeah, I mean, last year, actually, I don't know of a single contractor we've had that's only worked eight hours a day, generally. The sun comes up and they're working till sundown, I mean, they might stop at six or seven, but.
Well, let's make sure of that.
Yep.
All right, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
I thought we did it already.
Yeah, we did.
Well, it was kind of talked about, but then all of a sudden.
You're right.
The meeting and I don't, I don't think, I don't think I ever heard of it, especially while I made the motion.
Me, the second. Okay, all in favor signify. Thank you very much.
Fuck this guy.